This meeting is being recorded.
Nobody on Zoom still?
I'd forget to be... By the eighth, had we... we had already had the town meeting for the snowplow.
That was the eighth. Oh, no, that was the 16th. We needed to have it. We didn't do it on the eighth. But that's where we...
I think it was the eighth.
It was like early. It was before.
The first one, yes, the first was the meeting that you were on vacation and it was just us and then we planned it for seven days.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna add that I mentioned that we had already had the town meeting to approve the supplemental.
And that hour really pointed to the best angles.
That hour really pointed to the best angles.
I'm just gonna do this.
Yeah. Well, outside measuring out back here and sprinkling and my hair's all crazy now and, oh, well, that could be worse than this.
There were worse things.
Absolutely.
That was pretty rich of Richard to comment that, you know, he was on the budget committee and we specifically talked about this strategy.
Doesn't mean he pays attention to what's going on. But that's without it.
All the warrants good now? Everybody signed them up?
On the back.
Yep.
I realized I hadn't been in last week to go over last week's.
Yeah, that's why we thought you'd... But you're a good little newbie though. When I was putting it all in these folders, I'm like, oh, Sandra, good.
I try. I try. I have to remind myself.
Well, so we were actually talking about Sandra last week because we haven't seen her since.
I was ignoring them.
Yes, we were like, oh, no, I hope she's not sick. And I saw her ears must've been ringing because we're really talking about her and she goes walking by the front window. And I was like, oh, that answers our question.
So I'll put it on my calendar just to stop in to sign in between weeks. It's the only way if it's on my calendar, I'll do that.
Fridays, I figure Fridays. Molly, what's your name? Marty. Time to get him caught up.
That's okay. I must've really wanted to talk about you today because every single time I want to talk about somebody, I was like, Sandra, blah, blah. And never once did I want to talk about you.
It's true. She calls you all kinds of names.
I did.
I was busy today. I was doing...
And then I started talking to Marty about, I don't even remember who, but I was like, Sandra? Oh, what? And I'm like, no, not Sandra.
All right, we got the warrants, we have the minutes, public comment, anyone's here, select board reports, Sue?
I know I emailed you this, Alina, but did Steve ever have a chance to check out those burnouts?
He said that he did look at it, but he said he'll go and check again after we get this.
After with this rain.
Big rain, yeah.
Oh, is he checking for damage?
Yeah, the DOT said that if the water collects in those burnout marks on the road, that there's likelihood that it's damaging the surface.
Hasn't checked North Guilford Road across from the house that we don't like to talk about.
Okay.
In the street there, there's a whole bunch of burnout marks. And I think it's the same person or a related person to Sue's burnout mark. I'm getting to know vehicles.
Yeah. You already, I think, I'm trying to go between your, your report, is it in there about the streetlights not working or did we find out?
Yes, so the streetlights are now fixed.
They were.
Except for, it was fixed, was fixed. And then like a few days after it got fixed, a truck took out one of the poles. So...
And now they don't work anymore.
So now they don't work anymore.
What was the problem that they weren't working?
Um, so the power actually comes from the septic, the sewer house down behind the post office. Well, they're having some pump issues in there and when they reset something, it tripped that breaker.
Oh, by the pump station?
Yes, so it tripped that breaker. So that's all it was.
Oh, good.
And where none of our septic breakers are marked, nobody can figure out where the power came from. So it took us a little bit. The longest part of all of that was finding out where the power comes from. So, yeah, so they were fixed and now...
And they're labeled now.
And they're labeled now. Now we just need to replace one of them. So, well, we don't.
Right.
It's being replaced.
Somebody's insurance company is vac...
Somebody is, yep.
Yeah.
And what else does it have? A lot of this stuff you already had in your report, so thank you. We, I just wanted to, I'm not sure on the history of this, but the comprehensive plan, I know Tyler, you brought it up like maybe last fall or some time, and what's the process for that, like the status, I guess?
So, um, it's at the point where it's a public input, but I'm gonna touch base with the state to get a real understanding as to what the process is directly from the state. That way we can do everything the way it's supposed to be done the first time around and not make any oopsies or do things backwards or upside down or whatever. So that's where we're at with that.
You're good. Okay. And we had an application for the town manager position come in and did we just acknowledge that person or I don't know how we left that?
When they come in, they're, they were emailed. I always say, thank you. I'll ask this along.
Yeah. I just didn't want to like ignore and...
Yeah.
No, any of the ones that I've received, I always say, thank you for all the information or whatever, just so that they know we actually know.
Exactly, exactly. Okay. All right. There's no, like, yeah, that's on hand.
Great. So, yeah.
Okay. How you doing on committee inaugural meetings while we had the inaugural meetings first?
Yeah, so I've been having Jade call them all individually. Basically, the feedback that I've gotten is the timing of our meeting was at the worst. All their kids were starting back to school or they were out of town or it's the busy time of the year. And now that we're moving into this fourth month, things will be easier. We have had a couple of, be like, you know, the time that I thought I would have dedicated to this, I no longer have, blah, blah, blah. For the overall consensus is like November, they would might be able to set some time aside and...
And then schedule regular monthly or quarterly or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't...
Yeah.
Getting dropped. This is a question for Tyler. Any process on telephone, cell tower issues? Is this a person who was trying to communicate other than with Zoom?
It is on my agenda for this month. I'm almost at inbox zero for the first time in a very long time, so I'm ready, ready for this fight.
Okay, good. It ain't just us. It's everybody who passes through town.
Yeah, yeah. Speaking of communication, so I'm shopping around right now for a radio for the town office in the public works department so that we can have contact when he's not in the building. So we might have to install a big antenna on the top of the roof, but at least we'll be able to talk to him if he's not here. It's also a safety thing too, I think. So, yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
All right. Next on my list is concerns expressed by many people in town around about the current state of vandalism that we've been experiencing and what, if anything, can we do about that? It's getting ridiculous.
Yeah, it really is. And...
The bridge, post office, the tree, and that's just the stuff I know about.
Right. And there's gotta be more because, I mean, just reading the sheriff's department report is just months in, often.
Yeah, juvenile issue, juvenile issue, juvenile issue, keep saying, so... I think it's something we need to be aware of. I don't know what we can do about it, but short of more cameras in town, and I think everybody's talking about more cameras. We're talking about getting them for our house. The businesses on Main Street are talking about them as well.
Yeah. I mean, especially, and I kind of touched base with Tyler on this, is down here we have a public parking, but we are now parking a lot of our equipment outside. So that, I feel like kind of opens us up. During the parade, there was a lot of like trash and marinara sauce spilled all through the boat out back and...
Marinara sauce.
Yeah, like, and then baked in the sun all day because it was hot.
Okay.
Yeah, so just, I mean...
Something we need to give some thought to.
Yeah, and I mean, even if it's cameras outside.
Right.
We have an IT person now. They might be able to recommend us something.
And if we can catch people on a security camera, then at least we have a person to send the sheriff after if there is some...
Right.
Mischievous behavior going on.
Right.
And those cameras can alert you when there's activity, when there's like after hours kind of thing.
Like raccoons, bears.
Yeah, everything. I have...
Although, if there's a bear up back, I want to see it.
We had a bear eating our elderybushes.
Really?
Yeah, there's been bears scattered.
Yeah.
There's very, there's no berries on the short elderybush. They ate them all.
So maybe just looking at the cameras?
Yeah, and perhaps coordinate, not perhaps, we should coordinate. Everybody in town said that we're not duplicating areas. So I don't think of committees in order, but maybe an ad hoc, who's gonna cover what span of street.
And think about, the other thing is the location of the cameras that can be accessed and damaged too.
One of those things. Does Libra have any cameras? Doesn't it?
Yes, they do. And that's, that's where the pictures for some of the stuff that's happened have come from. But they're at a distance. It's hard to make out who's doing what and not everything is recorded, of course, so...
Okay.
It's, it's, it's an irritation to me. We have a nice town and all of a sudden we've got juvenile linkers, for lack of a better term.
Well, yeah, we actually talked about that earlier too because, you know, that's, that these kids essentially, they're not thinking of how much things cost or, you know, what they're actually damaging in terms of money.
Right.
So, yeah.
And they just don't care. And that kind of segues into my last topic where people keep buttonholing me about, what can we do about properties with junk filling the yards? And it's not just North Guilford Road. It's, and we all know a few of the properties people are worried about. We don't have an ordinance that covers that.
We sort of do. It's in the land use ordinance and it's pretty clear about...
Because I was looking.
Because there's something about junk yards and this and that, and it does very clearly state that you can't have trash and you can't have this and that. Brian pointed it out to me.
Does that just apply to junkyards or is that?
Well, what, for what constitutes a junkyard, you know, like there's a place up the street with an awful lot of junk vehicles and you can't do that unless you have a junkyard permit.
Okay, and then there's a property down here, I think, that has eight or nine vehicles.
Yeah.
Somebody's talked to me about.
Yep.
Water Street or might be on Forest Drive.
Yeah, I think it's like three or more unregistered vehicles.
Three's a lot of unregistered vehicles, honestly.
Yeah, when we, this was a point of discussion, what, a year ago or something like that? Because some other towns had implemented some cleanup ordinances.
Yeah.
And what we had decided in the meantime was to focus on enforcing the ordinance that we have.
Yeah, which makes sense. It's just not clear to me in the media's ordinance, and I'll look at it again.
If you do a search in it for like, say, junk, it'll...
Oh, is this a searchable PDF? That's good.
I think that's how I found it.
I, I read something in that.
And I know Kent's been to, to some of them. I'm not sure exactly where it stands. The one with all the vehicles, when he went there, they were just starting the process to clean them up. And they actually did do it, but now there's more.
This struck me as being just to regulate junkyards.
Yeah, yeah. So that junkyards are regulated. This is about what you, most places are not allowed to be junkyards, so...
Okay. So maybe we need to clarify this a little bit. A yard field or other area used as a place of storage for discarded, worn out or junk stuff.
There was something about garbage and stuff too, I believe.
And it's the rat problem that I think people are concerned about. We found a rat down behind the general store last week. It's a dead one, but it was definitely a rat tail like that. Miley found it, actually. Yeah. And, you know, rats are everywhere. I get that, but when there's garbage.
We can follow. When there's things that... If you'd be a little more diligent about checking on those things.
Is that really is a health, major health issue? Don't want to beat a dead junkyard to death here, but it's just something that does not keep the town at its good level, in my opinion.
Yeah. Speak, so, I'm sorry, do you, do you have to?
No, that was all I had.
On that, so the info that's in the, in the select board or town manager report, excellent. What would you recommend we do for keeping kind of apprised of the open code enforcement issues? We don't necessarily need to detail everything here, but maybe...
More like, like that issue?
Yeah, or the one on Greenville Road, all that kind of stuff.
Um, yeah, so I kind of asked for that kind of information and that's what I got. And because I was super busy this week, I was like, okay, that's, but, um, so, yeah, well, I'm gonna follow up with him, especially with the dangerous buildings and the junk piece, because when I asked him, it was very like, yeah, yeah, I'm doing that. But it wasn't like, this is what I've done. This is, so, yeah.
And there may be some stuff you can disclose to us, but it's confidential or something, so maybe it's a separate before, I don't know. And then they can probably advise on that.
Okay.
Do you meet regularly with Kent?
Well, see, what happens is Marty's so awesome. So like, I'm busy and Kent will come in the office and Kent will talk to Marty and then he'll leave and then I want, don't even know he was here, or he had everything he needed to say to Marty. So Marty's more in tune with Kent because he'll come in like and stand at the desk and talk to Marty and not necessarily pass information along.
He comes in, he's usually good for once per week. He comes in and, you know, drops stuff off or whatever. And so I usually bring him up to speed on whatever I've got to say or give him or whatever. So I'll make a note to definitely bring this up and say, look, maybe we gotta spend a little bit more time on that.
We just need to have a paper trail.
Okay.
Yep.
And an action.
And maybe, you know, anything that's going on, like just, you know, because right now he, like, the last time he, like, he got his book and told us, you know, how many building permits he issued and for what and stuff like that. But as far as these other issues, I'll make sure that we have them included.
And they don't have to be blared to the public by any means, just...
Right, just so that, you know, what's happening, if anything.
And a lot of, a lot of the stuff is, you know, it's, it's process and it's time based. So we, we should, this is about managing our expectations, I think, about like, okay, so we brought up this thing, it's being addressed. You know, the next step is 60 days from now. And 60 days from now, we can get update or whatever, just so we know that things are moving.
Just in case anybody here is through town, there was a earth moving permit that was issued unintentionally because it was, it was said that he was filling in a couple of holes and there was like yards and yards of gravel all been too close to the shoreline. So DEP is involved now and we're hanging through that, so...
What, what part of town is that in?
Pleasant Street. Down Pleasant Street, but it's all resolved. And actually Kent was telling me today that that was resolved and that the EPA went there and, you know, said, this is an easy one, you know, this isn't, this is not a big deal. So whatever it was, I don't exactly know what the resolution was, but it's all good now. Yep.
In town or further out?
Further out.
Okay. All right. There's a note in here about people moving to town, so I'm curious, how many people are moving to town?
Good question.
And how many of them are on discontinued roads that they didn't know about?
A few, a few of them on discontinued roads for sure. But I mean, this week alone, we had three people come in and registered cars that were previously registered outside of the state.
So that's been going on for like a year.
Yeah.
I started at Trent.
Down on Water Street though, it seems like we've got some nice people moving in down there.
And things are looking up down there.
Yeah.
Properties are being repaired and...
No, everybody that I've met that's, that's bought places down there seems like they're really nice and really excited to get going on whatever it is they're gonna get going on and...
Beautification committee members?
Oh, possibly, possibly.
Who is voluntary.
Has anybody purchased like on the North Guilford subdivision?
Yeah. I know one of them has been sold. Of course, there's 13 lots there, but I know one of them because I had to go and do a 911 address down there, so...
So is that being developed for spec or are these house lots that are being sold for construction?
For construction everywhere.
But nobody's doing spec construction down there?
I don't think so.
I doubt it. Because they're just selling them as is right there.
Is that gonna be a town road at some point?
Well, that would be if we decided, because right now it's just subdivision.
Yeah.
And then I had forgotten to ask earlier, but on, for the Wi-Fi, the next step there is to reach out to Consolidated, who owns the poles, inquire about the process for getting licenses to install stuff on there, on their poles. Yeah, I think we shouldn't need more than three in a worst case scenario.
Okay. Preferences on poles or just?
Well, I think, yeah, we can go, we'll go get the numbers when the time comes. We just want to know what the process is.
Okay. All right, that's great.
And then we, Alina and I had a good, started, in my mind, it'll be a one hour discussion. We turned into a two hour discussion today. We covered a lot of ground, but one of the things we had talked about was scheduling a work session to discuss the resiliency program and kind of go through, because there's a lot of information there, right? We could take this in many different directions, so just, just have a discussion about what we want to prioritize. And then I had also gotten, so a while back, Leslie Fernew, who is leading the effort in Dover-Foxcroft, had reached out. And then Lori Ocher, who is with East Main Development Corporation and is leading the charge over there for this, had reached out. She, just the other day, emailed me again saying that they've decided to partner with some other local organizations, so basically sending us to Leslie. So let's pick a, pick a time and date and then we can invite Leslie to join us.
Yeah, and I don't know who else is in Dover that Leslie is working with. I think there's like a committee or something. Is Dover partnering with any other towns that we know of yet?
So Leslie said, I'm sorry, Lori said...
F E R N O W.
I'm so close. No W.
Yeah, so Leslie's the contact for the group in Dover's called Commons Energy Collaborative. And they are serving the towns around Dover-Foxcroft, which includes Monson. And then the Moosehead Lake Region Economic Development Corporation are gonna work with Greenville and Beaver Cove. But... This is confusing now. They will be reaching out to Monson and Willimantic. Anyway, I don't think it matters. So there's two people. It's one in Dover, one in Greenville. It's Margarita Contrini who's in contact there. And... So anyway, it's not just what we want to do, but there's, the point is there's additional resources to help us.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, also, I'm glad you mentioned that because as we're talking about roads and grants and such, you know, it's all kind of climate related, you know, for flooding prevention and other stuff. So there might be some, some financial advantage of kind of working with other towns.
And I think to me, there's a, so this one is a, like a pool for different towns to do different things, but then there's, there's also a point here at which like by working together with different towns to come up with some bigger solutions, then that opens you up to some other options. Maybe that's kind of what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. You said it much better.
You're gonna win with words. I know what I want to say. It's just not...
I think sometimes I have to just say it out loud to really understand what it was that we just said.
Yeah, that's why I'm too, running for the most part, I have that, but sometimes like my head is just going so bad that my, my mouth just is like, what do you want to say?
Yeah, there's a word in there somewhere.
Yes.
Coming out.
Yes.
So do we want to pick, do you want to do this now or just pick a time?
Yeah, let's do it.
And of course, we have to see if Leslie's available.
I think for me, next Friday is probably far away the best day.
It's good for me.
Friday the 21st?
Yeah.
That works. Okay.
I think that works for me too.
I don't know that. And three, wanna suggest a time now or see what Leslie can do?
Yeah, why don't, well, is there a particular time that's better or that really doesn't work?
No, I'm hoping.
Nothing's on for that day.
Apparently before four. But other than that.
Okay, I will email Leslie also to see everybody. All right, I think that was everything on my list. Next up, we have town manager report.
Well, I gave you guys the lowdown in my actual report this time. I actually got to work on the updates for the GIS map this afternoon, so I have almost all of the updating from that to send to the GIS lady and she'll update that. And then once she updates it, she'll send me whatever it is that she needs to send me and then I can send that to the state to also update the public map viewer. So you can see that there as well. And then I have another dressing peg to show the, and then, let's see, what else do I have that wasn't on my list? Oh, so I mentioned in my town manager report that Chris Slater is in the new cemetery next to him. So I have his appointment here for the rest of time for that. He's been in multiple times in the last couple of weeks updating stuff and he's working with Glenn to try to get some newer maps going. And that's definitely something off the back of my mind, so...
And will he also be working on the tree issue in the churchyard cemetery?
That's more gonna be Public Works than I think.
But he did say that he's willing to work with Public Works to do, like, if any of the roads need, he'll, he'll work with Public Works to do any maintenance required.
Within the cemetery.
Within the cemeteries, yeah.
I'm just, we were in there for the cemetery tour the other day and one tree in the middle is not in great shape. And if it loses branches, they're gonna fall on these just restored hedge downs. Yeah. There's several trees of concern, but the one that really caught my eye is the one that's right in the middle of the cemetery. And it's not just churchyard, it's beside too, I think, needs a good deal of...
Well, he, he did say...
Encroachment dealing with...
Steven Jimmy, or, or Hunter did an awful lot. Hunter did a lot of, uh, down there, in North Guilford. I think they spent a lot of time down there, I know, I mean, maybe they, they're not done, but.
I haven't been down to the family grave site for a while, but last time I was there, it was almost in weeds, so.
Really, okay, well, this was probably in the spring.
I'll go check it out. I'll let you know how the Nelson grave site is.
I expect you will.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh, I think that's everything that I had that wasn't included in my, my, um, other than the FEMA, the updating of the, the hazard, um, thing. Elsina is from Emergency Main Agency. And she came and had a meeting with me and kind of went over some fire department stuff too because her husband is actually a firefighter person and he has done, um, two of the grants for fire trucks. And so he's like a superhero.
For Monson?
Not for Monson, but for, um, well, and he's also helping with Greenville with their new station. Um, so they're like huge little balls of knowledge for me. Um, but she also, so she kind of blackmailed me, but she was like, if you give me the information, I will, I'll send you all kinds of stuff that you want. I was like, okay, fair enough. So, um, the, basically, we just need to have like, um, projects that we're working on, whether it be short term, long term. If we can afford them now, but we would like to do them, just so that we have them on the plan and it.
You're talking about a capital plan, really?
Kind of, yes, but more, um, hazard management kind of thing, so like, um, the kind of things that I put on, before we had like ditching on the Barrow Falls Road, that, that's the only thing that we had on there. Um, so I included the generator on there because I was going down through what some of the other towns.
Just gonna ask you about that.
Um, so I put that on there and so when I emailed it back to her, she was like, oh, this, um, this Heather woman, if this is for shelter, there's some other grant available to you. She would be a good resource, so I actually have a, um, virtual meeting with Heather next week to see if there's potentially more grants. Um, after that's into another topic on our agenda, but, um, so working with Elsina and John, her husband with the fire department, there's lots of other avenues for us to go through that I wasn't aware of before even just that small piece of the FEMA map. Um, so some of the projects that I included on there was, um, ditching and adding gravel and the fabric to the daggers trim rod. And she said like, if things are on this, um, plan, there's, there's ones up there that could potentially help you. And having it on that plan makes it real, so, um.
Same argument for the conference of plans, by the way.
So, um, I, I did that, I did the generator, um, re-surfacing of the Barrow Falls Road, which hopefully is on the agenda for this midterm. Um, I've done lots of research and lots of reading about gravel roads in the last month. So I have read cover to cover of the gravel for small highway departments. Um, lovely reading, but, so I feel like we're moving in a positive direction when it comes to roads. Um, and.
Ellen, can I ask you a, a related question?
Yes.
You mentioned that her husband writes grants, fire department.
Or helps, yeah.
I, I was, you know, we budgeted for a grant writer for fire truck, is that?
Yes.
I thought maybe that's where you were going with that.
Well, and sometimes I need redirection back to where, um, because there's so much, there really is so much. So one of the things that we kind of got hung up on when it comes to the whole grant process of, is, um, our nonprofit number that is specific for the fire department was expired and has been expired since two thousand nineteen. So in order to get that, which we actually got today, that we've been waiting almost four months for and we've contacted and we actually had a firefighter drive down to the state office to actually pick it up. Because supposedly they mailed it like three times and we have never received it, so, yeah. No, Ryan was like, I'm going to pick up the fire truck from the garage and I'm gonna pull into the state house and they're gonna give it to me. And they did, so we actually have that piece now, so that, that was one of the things that we were, you know, so much pushback, something so simple, but takes so long, so. We're moving forward now, at least we have that, and now, so we have the state one and now we just need to reenact the federal one. The SAM number for the, the, the towns is, is good, but the fire department has to have their own in order to go after this grant.
Agreed, okay.
Yeah. Hmm, I think that's everything now.
Um, can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Uh, thank you for the, the fiscal summary report, is, is there anything on there? It looks, if I calculated right, we're thirty-three percent into the fiscal year. Is there anything that is over that is of concern for you?
I didn't see anything right off the bat that was super concerning, um.
Public Works is a little high and I was wondering, is that timing?
Yeah.
Is that the sand and the salt?
Yeah, so that's kind of like one of those things is like, that's a once in a, once a year process. And so like, it'll say like a hundred percent for that line.
It's actually thirty-three point eight.
Yeah, see, so, so now we're done with that.
Okay.
And it's also a seasonal department, so.
Yeah, well, that's kinda what I figured.
So this is their time to shine right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Town committee reports, beautification committee.
Oh, yeah, um, hold on. I actually made some notes.
I'm sharing, but nobody else needs to be cool.
Return the.
Yeah, go.
There you go.
I could use a little.
Okay, sure.
Oh, it's like a bomb compared to my house, so. All right, beautification. Rather than bicentennial?
Yes.
Okay. Beautification, we're planning to wrap the building poles with garland and solar lights. That means we're gonna need help from Steve and or the fire department to get things wrapped ten feet up the poles. And.
I'm sure our, our department would love to.
Between Thanksgiving and Chris Cringle Day, so, for the end of November.
Before December third?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, also, we're looking at placing the town Christmas tree at the intersection of North Guilford and Tenny Hill, kinda where the one that died last year was. I need to talk to Sue about that, see if Brian's really making us a stand, but we thought we might have a tree lighting. Did we decide to do that on Chris Cringle Day?
No.
Or the night before, I can't remember either. We need to figure that out.
You should do it on the day of Christmas.
That's, I think that's what we ended up, but we thought to try to recreate, not recreate, but the town used to have a big tree lighting event and something with carols and hot chocolate and turning on the lights and ho, ho, ho and stuff.
And Chris Cringle, it was December third, so.
December third, yeah.
I need to make sure that I mark that on the calendar.
Yeah, mark that on the calendar. And I think that's, oh, beautification, unless I've overlooked something. Okay.
All right, bicentennial?
Bicentennial. On October thirtieth will be pumpkin carving, pumpkin lighting and a custom parade down Main Street. Everybody should come, carve pumpkins, wear their costumes and trick or treat and we'll see what happens. I'm turning out my lights on ten thirty-one because I will have already done that Halloween thing the night before. And then on, uh, uh, sorry, November one, we kick off the food drive, which is the bicentennial event for November. Posters are gonna be printed when I get over to the museum to print on the big paper, but okay to have drop off here and we can stockpile back here and sort and whatnot. Exactly. That goes through November fifteenth, so the first two weeks of the month will be collecting stuff for local food pantries, probably the Sangre Hill YU church pantry will be the recipient. I don't know if there's a way to find out how many Monson residents use Greenville Food Pantry or the Guilford Food Pantry or.
That's a good point, right? We, we had, was it the three of us? Maybe it was before you started, but definitely Marty and I had a conversation about food pantry and whether we needed one in Monson or what other towns were serving our community.
Um, well, I end up, I did end up talking to, um, Sue Deloya about that because there used to be a food pantry here and she just strongly advised against it. She said that they didn't get a lot of turnout, um, and the people that were turning out were getting the food and taking it away and selling it. Um, so I guess there was a lot of that going on, which is sort of why they shut it down, so. Um, I do have a little stash out there in the office that, you know, people bring in, so I leave it there, um. It disappeared quickly the first time or two, um, basically.
Although I feel like we had different things to offer, I feel like the reason why they're not.
Well, there is like peanut butter, macaroni and cheese, those, the, the people who were kind of the ones who, who were more, most interested in, in having it, um, hadn't been in, so. Anyway, when they do come in, it'll be on.
But it would be, if you were, if this is the point you were raising is, it would be interesting to know like what, to have some stats about.
Yeah, because I mean, if there's a large part of our community traveling to other food pantries, maybe it would, and I know that some towns have things like clothes closets. Then, um, I was actually.
They would know though, like, it's not kind of like.
I was wondering, do they know?
Do they even ask, where are you from?
And I know the Sangre YU church has two Monson families. They, they track their stuff very well.
Okay.
If Don and Dick are doing it, but I can't speak for the others.
I don't think there's a sign in sheet, right? But, but people know.
Yeah. And I think that like, I mean, towns are, are tough for a lot of people right now and so maybe, you know, the food pantry didn't, wasn't of need a few years ago and it, it might be a thing now.
It's, yeah.
Definitely something to look.
Yeah, and I, I think, I'm not advocating that we open a food pantry, I'm just saying that w- w- we should know like what levels of food insecurity we have in our community.
Exactly, it's a, for sure.
But I'll do a little more digging to see if we can find something out about some of the other communities, Sangre what we know about, Guilford, Greenville, Dover.
Yeah, and you know that thing about like Penguins probably has this stats and stuff, but yeah.
Oh, it might all be in one place.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna have like municipal level stats, but they, this is definitely the.
They might have some more, um, uh, different kind of numbers for us for what really our community is struggling with the most, random? Because I know that Penguins is definitely someplace that we send people.
Yeah, who supports. So this is my basic silly question, but, um, when you go to a, um, a food pantry, i- i- is there, are there any questions, what do you, I mean, do they ask, are you truly in need or I?
Yes, but from what I know of other, like, I've known people that have worked in them and know there's no questions asked.
Right, right.
And, and I don't believe anybody would be turned away.
Yeah.
Somebody that I know that worked at one actually stopped working at it because there were people coming that were definitely not in need.
Driving up in the Mercedes.
Yeah, pretty much, and so he was like, you know, I don't like this, so.
They're probably.
But I'm pretty sure there's no questions asked whatsoever.
Population needs.
Yeah.
Well, I'll do a little more digging before we get to food, right? That's, um, it for bicentennial, the last event will be Chris Cringle. And maybe the, um, festival committee will decide to do January first again at the gym, that was fun.
It was.
Everybody really likes that, so, we'll see.
Yeah, that's great.
I'm trying to initiate that.
It takes a little planning, so they need to, they still get working in November, there should be enough towns, but just community, things to bring the community together as well.
Yeah, for sure.
That was about, so. And that's all I have for bicentennial.
All right, well, business, the charging station.
Okay, um, this is more of a discussion than anything, um. Uh, just the quote that I received from Carbon Day, well, I guess it would be, um, Charge Point, but I received it from Carbon Day. Um, so it would be, the total cost before installation would be eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. And so what that includes is, um, obviously the actual charger. Um, it, well, it's a dual charger, so it's technically two of them. But it also includes, um, the I think it's two years, but.
So two vehicles at a time can charge?
Yes, yes. And so it also comes, um, with the cloud plan that's also included in that eleven thousand dollars. And so, um, and I think that actually comes with, yeah, so it has software updates, reporting, um, data collection, uh, and credit card capabilities, pricing. That whole nine yards is all included within that eleven thousand dollars, um, in the grant, for the grant aspect of it, we kinda have. It's all broken down so that, because each piece is different in the.
And you get more money if you have your cloud plan.
That's, that's, that's what I understood too. Um, and so like on the actual land, um, application, it breaks it down into, um, networking and then the actual charging equipment. So the installation piece of it, somebody actually has to come out and look at it and um, this Carbon Day guy gave me all the specs so that I could have our local electricians also give us a quote. Um, so I forwarded that information along, so hopefully.
To Jeff and Jeff?
Yeah, to Jeff and Jeff. Um, so hopefully we'll have, the installation piece is, is the biggest one because we need to, uh, make sure that we know where we, where we want to put it essentially, um, so.
They're looking at next spring likely before that, earliest before that can go.
So do we need a efficiency main installer or do we see the efficiency made approved provider?
Just the provider, and so like, in the install, um, so like this, the Carbon Day is on their list, um, and they're also the installer. So that's the person that I'm waiting on, um, and technically we don't need more than one quote for the actual grant process. But obviously we should get as many as we can. Um, but yeah, so I went down through this list and contacted all the people that do the install, the project management and supplier so that they're ready straight across the board, that way I'm using all of them from that. But as for like the electrician piece, no, they don't have to be on part of the, um, because that's basically making sure that our power can supply to the actual, um, charger and then the install person, the Carbon Day installer is the one that actually connects it all together, so, or however that works after that, but.
And then the, the whole package, um, application, was it, is it November seventeenth, oh seventeen?
Yeah.
Do you feel good that it'll?
I hope so, I mean, I keep reaching out to these, these installers, it, it's just a matter of getting to us.
Yeah.
It's, it's really the thing, because it's, it's not like we have, you know, Jeff and Jeff in our area that just comes, can come here, but, um, I, they all know what we're trying to accomplish and when the deadlines are and stuff, and so I'm hoping, um. And the guy from Carbon Day emailed me this morning, said that he, um, is hoping to get me another quote for the charging station by the end of the week, so hopefully that's a good start. Um, but are, we still wanting to put them up at the gym by the banstand, is that where we're looking to put them?
Yeah, like, um, on, going like this side, right?
Yeah. Banstand side, yeah.
Okay.
There's, so, okay, I have a couple questions.
Yeah, maybe I have answers, maybe I don't.
The, so the the grant program is, how is it structured? So it's, i- if I, my recollection, but I haven't looked at it in a while, is it's like X percent or X dollars per charger up to a certain percent? And then there's an adder if it's on municipal slash library land, like, and there's an adder if it's network versus not network?
Yes, so that's, actually, probably I don't have the answer to that. Um, so I will forward you the email that the woman from Efficiency Main sent me and so that maybe you can dissect it better than me and let me know if there's something that I misunderstood. But, um, and I can forward it to all of you guys, that way we're all reading the same material. Um, but it was, and I talked to her on the phone too, and she wasn't like, she didn't lay it out like that for me to like understand like, okay, this is how much per charger that we, the grant covers. Um, so I, I will definitely check with her on that. And again, maybe it's even in that email, just so many things have happened outside of that email, but.
Much ensues.
Uh-huh.
The maximum two thousand for non-network, five thousand for.
For networks, okay. And that's per charger and that would be?
Per level two.
Yeah. This one, the one. This one, the one that we got a quote for is level two, and so the actual charger itself is five thousand, one hundred and ninety-five. For the actual charger, and then the five-year commercial cloud plan is, um, two thousand dollars, but that's per plug. So it's actually one thousand dollars for one of the plugs, so.
So, okay, so this says. Eligible projects. Here, see, eighty percent, this is before the library added, but eighty percent of the installation cost. Up to five thousand dollars per level two plug, so if you have a dual charger, so then. We should probably confirm, but if that's two plugs, then that's ten thousand dollars, but it, there's a question of whether that's. Just for the installation cost or whether that also includes the equipment.
Right.
Cost. Um, and then the nature conservancy shipped into extra two thousand dollars per network plug. So. And then a to- up to a total of ninety percent, so, um, where am I getting at is, we're gonna have, it says eleven thousand dollars in equipment so far?
Yes, technically, um, including the, the five-year commercial club.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna have eleven thousand dollars of equipment, and then we're gonna need somebody to install. Prepared to be, get some sticker shock on that, um, then we're gonna need to, if we do wanna put them in that spot, we're gonna have to dig a trench from the hole to. Uh, to that spot, and we had some quotes before, I think it was like twenty-five hundred or something like that.
For the trench?
Yeah, I think so, we'll have to get new quotes, but.
Yeah.
Um, and then you have to pay CMP to provide you a new service. And they may charge us to replace a pole or, or what, so, so that's something we'll need to confirm. So, at the end of the day, let's say that it's probably gonna be twice whatever, at least twice whatever that number is that we're looking at now. So that's, if it's, let's say it's up being twenty-five thousand dollars, for example. Because also the equip, does, does that include like the ballers and everything?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, which I can, there's a whole stack of stuff that.
And like the concrete pad?
Um. It says.
Maybe, maybe not, so.
Yeah, so, um, because he asked me, he's like, is it, is it gonna be on wall or is it gonna be a standalone, I said, I'm almost certain that it's gonna be a standalone.
Stalone, yeah.
Cause there's nothing for to hang off of, um, and he's like, okay, so this one is the actual thing with two chargers on it, so. So, but yeah.
So, okay, so, let's say it's twenty-five thousand dollars, so we seem to be prepared to find twenty-five hundred for, for more, uh, somewhere else.
Okay.
And, um, maybe, I, I think that the, we had worked this deal last, this is the first time I've ever heard this. Last time we worked a deal where the charging company that we were gonna bring in, um, they own the chargers and they take care of all the payments and everything. So we were just basically providing a spot, and then they were gonna put them in and deal with it. So, they were gonna pay for that, and then we were gonna get a similar grant to cover all the prep work, and so all we really had to do was trench and. Cover and build the concrete pad that's not gonna go on, so what I'm saying is that if, um. Maybe we could cover the trenching and the concrete pad and have that count as our ten percent contributions, and then see if we could do it or something.
Yeah.
I don't know, but, uh, those are all things that will need to get sorted out in the next one.
Okay.
Tanner, just found on this document, eligible costs, it says, when determining the amount of the incentive to be awarded, Efficiency Main will apply eighty percent to eligible costs of the price quote. Submitted with the application, the costs are limited to, and then there's six things, charging equipment, installation, commissioning of charging equipment, networking, um, costs, subscription costs. Electrical service upgrades and our circuits, mounting hardware, uh, construction costs, excavation, paving signage essential to installing chargers.
Perfect.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I knew that list was somewhere in my email because I heard that.
This is, this program is better than the previous ones.
Yeah.
The previous one was much more narrow on what they would cover.
What they would cover, yeah, I knew in the woman from Efficiency Main said that it was more, um. Less specific as to what they would cover than in the past, so.
Good, great.
Okay, so, is that, is that on that one?
Um, let's just, so we only have one more meeting before the, the grant is due, so let's just make sure that. If there's anything else you need from us, I mean, I don't think you, we're gonna need an approval from us to submit the grant application, um, but if there's anything you need to sign or anything like that, let's just make sure we get it.
Okay, yeah.
Did you wanna look at this?
I'll look at it another time, yeah.
So, okay, so signed contract with, uh, RHR Smith, so this is just the continuance of the check rec, um, for them to finish. Uh, it does say it should be completed by October fifteenth, but they have been kind of. Working anyways, waiting for this, um, because they, they knew that it really would be an issue, um. And they had all the information that they needed really from us, so hopefully that will be put to bed, but. Unfortunately, it took so long that now, when I actually catch up the things, I get to start where they leave off, which would be July, so.
Were you able to find an account that we could use for this one?
Um, uh, yes, so I did, but I think it was, um. I think it was in the auditor line. It was auditor or. Training, maybe, and, um, admin.
There should be like a headache.
Uh, yeah, all inclusive.
Reduce, reduce your headache.
Absolutely, lots of things are going on here.
Well, so another thing with this, excuse me, is that we would. Get the money.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, the way he said that we can set it up is that we can charge everybody, we can charge, um. Say, you can stay on here until you are full, but as soon as you're no longer charging and you're just taking up space, then you start charging. Um, to kind of keep people from just leaving their car there. Oh, very long periods of time, um, he said there's lots of different ways that you could do it.
Max out.
And again, security cameras.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right, so I'll move that we offer Hysley to sign the contract with RHR Smith and Company. All in favor?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous.
We're unanimous on that. Before we get done, I have one more question that I should have asked during.
That's okay.
But, continue.
Um, well, you can take place of the generator grant, cause I technically already covered that in my, my spiel, so.
Okay, um, so, when the three of us were at, at the road session at the MMA conference last week, we learned so much. Um, but one, one thing that we took away, um, that was said is that the select board has to approve, um, the no-through trucks, um. Signing engine and road access, and so on our way home, we noticed that there is no, no, no through truck sign coming onto North Guilford from one fifty.
It got taken down, it was there, we bought it, it got put up, it's gone.
However, there is a sign of the triangle, and I, I noticed that.
It's gotta be both ways, though.
Yeah, um, but I don't know what the history was if the select board ever approved that signage. Right, so that sign either should come down until we can get our, our stuff done appropriately, yeah, and we need a road ordinance.
Yeah.
To substantiate that.
I'd say we leave the sign out. Because nobody's paying attention to it anyway.
Well, my other question was, I.
Although I hear our votes.
Someone got pulled over.
Our vote did, got pulled over right in front of our house, and I, I thought it was for speeding, suicide, no, it was for violating the no-through truck, and he got fined. Yet they haven't stopped driving, which is why I think I know who took the sign down.
Well, anyway, we need probably to visit that in the future.
That will be limits the whole shebang, we've got to, well.
Yeah, I'm all on.
The one thing, right?
Yeah, so I mean, at least with the speed limits, we technically, that's out of our hands, that goes to the traffic anyway, so.
But at this point, we don't legally have speed limits, except for tiny part of the town.
And then, although, I can't imagine if I met a trooper on the North Guilford road going seventy, that they would be like, oh, there's.
I know, right, right, right.
I can't imagine, but.
Well, there's no speed limit, it's forty-five, right?
I, I think so, yeah.
And, and that also impacts, um, our decisions, um, as far as ATV access on.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Right, right.
So that's a whole nother issue we need to kind of get on.
Well, good, put some boundaries around it.
Yeah. Okay, so we kind of went over the generator thing, so.
Sorry, remind me.
Okay, so the generator was basically just that, we got the grant, we were awarded the grant, but it was only fifty percent versus the, the whole generator, um, so. After my meeting with Heather, I'll have some more insight as to if we could potentially be eligible for more grants or, or not, um. So, yeah, uh, supplemental tax for thirty-one Water Street, so this is the supplemental bill for the demolition of Water Street, which looks wonderful.
Did I see the neighbors building down there?
That's what it looks like. Okay, so both, both pages, two signatures.
Um, I have one question slash concern about this, um, so the bid was for, um, twenty-three thousand. Um, he did come back and say that in the meantime, between when it was awarded and there was some time passed, um, that there was an increase to the, um. The dumpster removal and the tonnage and stuff, um, he came and spoke to us about it and was going to go back and get the information about that. And wasn't yet back, now we, are we being, should we? Check in with him before we do this, because we don't wanna do two supplemental taxes, I don't think, or do we wanna say, well, he never came back, so this is what you get?
Basically, he, he was asking us to pay the additional tonnage, um, because otherwise his bid would have been more, but it was actually our end as to why things got held up because. It was, um, never, never filed with the, the registry, so that's when we had that extra, what was it, thirty days or sixty days or something that he had. And we had to serve him all over again in that whole process, so that was kind of on us, um, because it wasn't followed through beforehand.
Do you know how much of a difference this is kind of?
I don't.
He said that.
I, I feel like he said it was like three percent or, well, if I'm wrong.
I thought he said five percent, but.
Or somewhere, it's, it's that percentage, but it's just for the tonnage, um.
Just, yeah, so he.
Not for the, you know, it wouldn't be five percent on top of that whole bid.
It's not gonna be a lot of money.
Yeah, so maybe, I mean, either we sign this now and then eat that if it ever turns into anything, or. Maybe wait, cause we thought he, it sounded like he was gonna be right back, right back.
Yeah.
How long ago was it, he was in?
Over a week ago.
Yeah, maybe two, yeah.
Two questions, one, what does our contract say about this, about timing? And two is, when did the rates change, because there was also, we were waiting on him at the end of the day. He had other jobs he wanted to finish first.
Yeah.
That, that's a good question, and that was really the information that I asked for, so he said that he was going back to the, the actual. Wherever.
Malcolm, I think.
Yeah, um, to kind of give a schedule as to when things changed and like what the quote from Malcolm was and when he got his quote from him. And then what it was now, and then kind of like in between, um, so that's kind of what we were waiting on to see. The backup as to what the increase was.
I mean, again, this goes back to the contract terms, because like, hey, fuel prices change, every price, all prices change, you don't get to ride the wave unless it's in your contract.
Right.
The only, if I, if my memory serves, I think the only thing in that, in the contract about timing was, um, that he had like four days. To get it, once he started, it had to be done in four days, um. And then, it may have said something about it within thirty days of, of being awarded, it would need it to be done, but. That was not any, any real fault of his, you know, in the beginning.
Sometimes on bids, it usually says like, this price is good for like sixty days or whatever it may be, but. Since we technically awarded it for that amount in that time frame, it's, it's one of those great areas.
What I'm thinking is, for the, is not my, what I'm saying we should do, so the thought here is, we accepted a bid of a certain price and got the work done. And so. I'm curious if this is a little bit of money or a lot of bit of money, but. If it's the, I mean, to, from, for the homeowner's perspect, the property owner's perspective, you know, we ran this process, we accepted the bid. And so I would think that the bid, that the bill that they get would match that bid price.
That's a good point, yeah, I, I really, I agree with that, from his perspective, because it's really not his fault that things weren't done properly in the beginning either.
Yes, no, so if, if anything, I feel like that, that would be a, a town fault.
We didn't follow the right process, so, yeah.
So, not, not something that he. Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
You gotta get some WD-40 for these chairs.
Yeah, well, Marty and I are going to order some new leather and reupholster our lovely, um, gifted chairs over here.
We can get that stuff, it just goes on and with heat. A pair of such things, yeah, we're blocked up, dude.
Well, we thought of that, but I mean, really, we took, we looked at the bottom, it's so easy and.
Start moving up in the world, I, I like.
She did too, and I flipped it upside down, I'm like, Bob Marty, there's two screws right here, let's just, you know.
Well, they were offered up, and of course, on that particular day, I was like, yeah, and then I'm not molding them, and I'm like, well, you know, that's the tape or whatever, and a couple of them can go to the dump, and then. Today's the first night I actually put them out, and when I was putting them out, I'm like, what are we doing?
Well, they're sturdy, so.
They are, and there's a little padding, I mean, they're better, it's either that or that.
Better than the.
Yeah, so anyways.
I think we can make it work.
Yeah.
Work our magic on it.
All right, amazing.
So, um. I originally lied to you and said that it was a home stuff exemption, but that, okay, we have already did, so, um, this one was actually. One that we tried to do in a, um, a previous meeting, but the, the mill rate was wrong, um, so this was. Uh, original acres on the property never got changed, um, so they were built, being built for more acres than they actually have, so.
Which is a break, and they're everything.
Look at you, I don't know, you just saw it, though, cause you come in and you say.
Sign monitoring, you come in and you check.
Oh, that's right, and I look at stuff and I sign, yeah, okay. Thank you for reminding me what I do.
Okay, I need to not put stuff in this folder. Close it, labels for what it's intended for, do we have that, um. Carbon Day thing? I'll take that back and put it right in here, before it's no longer in my drawers.
And VR.
All right, so municipal valuation return, this is from, um, the commitment book, and it also gets sent to the state.
I did my taxes today. They're due on Monday.
They're due on Monday?
Yes, my lovely husband reminded me.
Uh, you got an extension, did you?
Me too.
This is the first year we did.
Okay, so, actually, I guess there's only one page. I'll flip through here again, just to make sure.
I'm hopeful, well.
I'll just scroll down, I can read the rest of this question.
Yeah, you want the beginning part, I kind of kept that for myself, but you're more than welcome to read. Plus, this will become part of our commitment book at some point, once I get it all down together.
We met one new house last year.
Apparently, yeah.
Is that on Tenny Hill? The new house?
Where's that house?
I met somebody the other day who said they had built a house on Tenny Hill up near Rentus in last year. And I don't know if they're very odd.
Sounds like it. So they must be going somewhere, sounds like it. But, yeah, um. I just like the eavesdropping. I said, I just like the eavesdropping, that's all.
She's a nosy fan.
I am, but. Well, sometimes that's the only way you find out stuff.
It's true.
Grubbs out if you're wanting to get up at 4:00 AM, phase pretty soon.
Who's that?
My daughter.
Yes.
For a little while, it was when the sun comes up, but now the sun comes up later. Now, 4:18, can we get up now? Can you get up? Can you go to sleep? And it's usually, you know, like 40 minutes before my alarm goes off, so there's really no point in going back to sleep anyways.
I agree.
Does any of the, the tax stuff on the first page, and I, I might not be asking the right question, with the new at Homestead, the other one for
The senior?
Senior one.
Well, there's a bunch of other people's here, if you
I just didn't know how that, if any of that was related.
You know, I don't, the whole senior piece of it is very foreign to me, and I think it is to Ed too. Obviously, it's senior, but, um. I'm not sure that if it would be on here.
I haven't gone into effect yet.
Yeah.
It would be in the next
Next one.
The next tax year?
Yeah.
Right.
I'll just scan for you, though, just in case, we could be wrong, it's happened before.
Right, because this ends June 23rd, June 30th. The next tax would be, although you have, those of us who qualify for the senior tax thing, you have to file every year by December 1st, I believe.
Yeah, for the next tax.
For the next tax year, right? So, okay.
All right, quick claim deed.
Okay, so this quick claim deed is for Keith Shaw, we previously owned his, his house, and now he has since paid off all, all years, and so here's the feedback to him.
Who pays the recording fees for this?
He does. It gets applied when we place the lien, it, we charge for the lien and the discharge, and I think there's like the certified mailings applied. I think there might be administrative fees, that's like $19 or something, that's applied.
Where is this property?
Poisoned tree.
Okay, that's what I I don't have the tax maps memorized, so I can't, and so we jumped to
Well, he's lived there his whole life, geez.
He may have, but I have.
Well, I was neighbors with him my whole life.
Well, there you go.
In Walk in the Woods, Bill Bryson book.
Love that book, so funny.
It's great, this, so they, he stops at Shaw's on his way through Monson, and so there's a section about, about Shaws and about this really angry dog, and I know that dog. And the dog lived in, was chained up, lived in that garage there where the cow was, the cow was.
Was it like a chow?
Kind of husky, chow, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
And it was just so mean, but there was a basketball hoop right there, and we would play basketball over there, and if the ball ever went over by the dog, you took your life at your hands to get it back. And it was pretty, pretty fun to read about it in that book.
I've read that book like four times.
Yeah, for a few years. We just started talking about swapping books around.
I haven't read that one.
I haven't.
It's always to read.
Yeah, we do, and the time to read is just shrinking as the day goes on.
It doesn't get better with retirement, trust me.
It's my favorite, favorite. Okay, agreement for the boundary line. So this is pertaining to the parking lot behind the quarry. So we had a survey done, um, this is
Behind the quarry or beside the quarry?
Mine's the waterfront area.
Yeah, okay, so the, off of the public road?
Yeah, the road that's not a road, yeah.
Yeah, the road that's not a road, that, anyway, basically, all this agreement is, is just making it formal, saying that we're in agreement of as to what this boundary says, and the APIS are already in agreement and have already signed it. Has to be authorized and witnessed and stuff.
Can I see them now?
Yes.
Okay, so the question is APIS?
APIS name?
APIS, what, they're the people who bought the house?
So it's their last name.
Gotcha.
Sean and Laura. Well, when the guy called me, he was like, is Marty available? And I said, no, she, she's out today, and they're like, oh, okay, well, maybe you can help me, and I was like, maybe. And so he's like, you're supposed to have this boundary line on the agenda for this, this coming meeting, I'm like, what? And then he was like, yeah, you guys had a survey done, I'm like, he's like, does this sound familiar to you? I'm like, not at all, so then when he got here, I was like
I'm really confused, the house is over here, right?
Yeah.
So who owns this piece?
Us.
Okay, we own that.
Yeah.
All right, that's why
So this was the line in question.
All right. Oh. So this just clarifies it for the registry.
Yes, yes, so all the
Yeah, that's right here, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So.
Now I know what we're talking about.
That is typically helpful.
It, I try to have a clear
That's the signature page, and this is the goodies, if you want to start there.
I'll just all those. I'm not gonna read the agreement, I assume the attorneys have done that, yeah?
Um, and then the surveyor will come back and pick it up once it's all signed, and then it will actually be sealed.
And they're using that house as an Airbnb, is that its intended use?
I thought they were living there.
Yeah.
No, I don't know, I, I've heard different things, so.
Sometimes people buy things with one idea and change their mind.
Really? Never heard that.
I was looking at that, the DOT partnership information that you emailed us, is that something we need on the next agenda?
Um, yes, so I will update the RFP, which I was kind of hoping I'd have time to do that this afternoon, which I didn't. But I will update the RFP, and then we can, I'll, I'll forward it to you guys when I actually have it complete, and then at the next meeting, we can poster, make that decision.
Okay.
At the next.
And Matt, did he say he could come, or?
Yeah, yeah, he said, if, whenever he's needed, just let him know.
Okay.
It's getting to be better time here.
Definitely, pepperoni's not called, I'm talking.
Four black beans, silver points.
What was that, Marty? For the minutes?
Like, I called Robinson, decided it wasn't that playing, I said, could you have that ready for 7? So I'm like going, hope they don't eat it. I know what happens to food that doesn't get picked up.
All right.
Some stuff mailed up. Updating rules, so it's rules of order, so I messed up on my goodness, but that's okay. So, eh, I touched base with you, um, so basically, it was her understanding that when new select board members come on, we update them or whatever. And I also noticed that it was still said second and fourth Thursday of the month, so I changed that, and then I changed the names on the third page, so that's all the updating I did, if you guys want to agree on that, or change something, or whatever you, that's, that's there.
I had a question, and this came about when I was reading a paper a month ago. It was the Hampden School Board meetings, that they had a, like a $40,000, $44,000 settlement with a gentleman that they had disallowed to come to future meetings because they deemed it inappropriate, and he sued them for freedom of speech violation. And I'm just wondering in terms of, like, how would our attorney view, you know, I forget where it is right now, but you know, if, if someone is inappropriate in our eyes, in the public setting, what are, we're on the application, action that we can do that's not gonna violate anything?
Well, without knowing any of the details, let me speculate. I think, what I recall from the time we had issues was that you can ask somebody to leave. And if they don't leave, it's trespassing, but you can't prohibit them
From future meetings.
From future meetings. Unless there's some others, you know, we could get a restraining order or something like that.
That's what I
If there's a safety issue, or like threatening, or, or something like that.
Well, that's what I was thinking too, and I just wanted to throw that out there, because when I read that, because it did say it had some implications for, you know, public meetings going forward.
Do I have to sign this?
Yeah. Do like you already did.
So then, yeah, I don't have any, is there anything else you could add? So then I'll, I'll move that we adopt the rules of order for Monson Select Board meetings as amended.
Do we get those posted on the website?
Sure thing.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
When, when we switched to once a month, we, we wanted to have full agenda.
We did, we succeeded.
I know, when I was typing my time, I didn't record that, but there's lots of good stuff out.
Yeah, no, this is great, all right, now, Marty, for your viewing pleasure, we'll enter executive session for one MRS A4056A Personnel Matters.